Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled Apex Town Council meeting for September 4th, 2018. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Melissa Bolden. She is a laypastor at Hope Chapel, and she will come for our invocation tonight. Ms. Bolden, please come up.
So first, I just want to say thank you for inviting me. I just find it such a great honor to be here tonight. So let us pray. Father, we give honor to you. We give all honor and glory to you. You are the creator of the universe, and you created each and every one of us in your likeness. We are thankful that you have made each of us uniquely and specifically, and created each person in this room for such a time as this. As the designer of each of you, we ask for divine wisdom tonight. We ask that you would give us wisdom to govern, to lead, to demonstrate your goodness and mercy in Apex and its surrounding areas. Father, give us your heart so that, as a community, we will enact laws and activities and policies that will benefit the fatherless, the downcast, the widows, and those from foreign lands. We ask that you invite us, I'm sorry, that you unite us in purpose and vision. Lord, our nation needs unity tonight. We thank you for each person in this room's service to their community. We ask that you bless the teachers, the civic leaders, the firemen, the policemen, that serve us so diligently. We ask for blessing on our servicemen who give their lives daily to protect and defend our country. Father, we ask your blessings upon this community. Bless its citizens, its schools, its businesses. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was pretty awesome, wasn't it?
I know.
Love it. Thank you very much. Good to see a good crowd here today. I'm excited that you're all here tonight. Goodness knows, you could be doing something completely different tonight, but you're here, and we appreciate that. We're here to serve you. Tonight, we go into our time of presentations, and Jennifer Park is going to be presenting for the Director of Local Program Development and Regulations. Ms. Park. Hi.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Park, and I am the Director of Local Program Development and Regulations for the North Carolina Tobacco Prevention and Control Branch with the Division of Public Health. I would like to say thank you to the council for inviting me to come and educate about the toll of tobacco use and the authority local government has to regulate the use of tobacco products. I'm going to provide a brief overview of each of these areas for data, local government authority, and evidence-based tobacco policies. The Surgeon General's report is based on the strongest level of research available. In 1964, the first report was released that linked smoking to cancer and heart disease. Over 50 years later, Surgeon General's report on the health consequences of smoking was released. The new report provides evidence of the serious damage smoking does to the body. Since that time, science shows the following types of cancers that are caused by smoking. The ones in red were added to the 2014 Surgeon General's report, so science is continuously learning the health effects of tobacco use. Secondhand smoke exposure also causes adverse health effects. There are 7,000 chemicals and 70 carcinogens that affect non-users. There is no safe exposure beyond that 30 feet even. According to the State Center for Health Statistics, tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable death in North Carolina. Tobacco causes more deaths each year than alcohol, AIDS, homicides, suicides, car crashes, and illegal drug use combined. The Surgeon General's report also states that 1 in 5 deaths are due to tobacco use, and for every death, 30 individuals are sick or disabled. As you can see on the right, this leads to significant healthcare costs. In order to focus on preventative measures, we need to focus on strategies that help our young people, as 90% of tobacco users start before the age of 18, and they are increasing due to electronic cigarettes. In 2016, the Surgeon General released his report on electronic cigarette use among youth and young adults. This report provided a lot of evidence of the negative health effects of electronic cigarettes, including that electronic cigarette aerosol is not harmless, and that e-cigarettes should be included in tobacco-free policies. These are the types of electronic cigarettes on the market. They deliver nicotine to the body, and many may be easily modified to even include liquid marijuana or THC. Many of you may not have heard of a Juul that is currently the most popular with our youth. The Juul has double the amount of nicotine compared to some electronic cigarettes on the market. Here's a slide from the CDC that shows what is in an electronic cigarette aerosol. The National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health recommends workplaces that are to be tobacco-free also include electronic cigarettes. Youth tobacco use is going up because of electronic cigarette use. Here is a list of the tobacco products currently used by students in North Carolina. Electronic cigarettes are the number-one choice by youth. It is important to consider regulation that prohibits the use of all tobacco products to send a message that all of these products are harmful to our kids. There has been a 900% use, 900% increase in electronic cigarettes in high school students in North Carolina since 2011, and 23% of high school students are considering even using electronic cigarettes in the next year. This graph shows the adult smoking prevalence compared to the national average. So, North Carolina is in green, and the United States prevalence is in blue. So, what's the solution? Electronic cigarette, or electronic, I've talked about that for 17 slides. So, what's the solution? The CDC Community Task Force recommends tobacco-free policies to reduce the exposure to secondhand smoke, reduce the prevalence of tobacco use, reduce the initiation among our young people, reduce the tobacco-related morbidity and mortality that also includes electronic cigarettes and cardiovascular events. North Carolina is currently the only state in the southeast that has a comprehensive law in place that's brought a lot of public health benefits. There are other progress throughout our state of tobacco-free environments, such as hospitals, healthcare facilities, prisons, schools, childcare centers, and more. The National Parks and Recreation Association released a position statement on tobacco consumption in parks. Their goals included prevented initiation among youth, similar to the CDC, as well as end tobacco use among adults visiting the park, eliminate disparities, improve quality of life, and stop environmental degradation caused by cigarette butts and filters. The next section is to better understand local government authority for smoke-free and tobacco-free policies. General Statute 130A-498 gives local governments the authority to adapt and enforce local ordinances that are more restrictive than state laws, to prohibit tobacco use on local government buildings, vehicles, grounds, parks, and recreation, and public places. The UNC School of Government has provided guidance to local governments to clearly state that local government has the authority to regulate tobacco products. This also includes e-cigarettes. The legislature has never passed legislation preempting local governments from regulating the use of electronic cigarettes. Therefore, local governments can pass regulation under the basic authority to protect the health and welfare of the community. If regulation for government buildings or grounds covered tobacco products, then that interpretation is that electronic cigarettes are included within that definition. Here are some key lessons learned for successful policies, as well as implementation, especially with limited resources. Bessemer City has one of the examples that's the strongest in our state. To update this dashboard, wait, here we go. To update the dashboard, you can see on the top, municipalities and counties must have 100% of their coverage in their regulation. This does not include exemptions for designated areas. As I mentioned before, there's no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure. Another example is the town of Griffin Parks and town of Bethel Parks are now tobacco-free recently this summer. Wake County, as you know, has their own Wake County ordinance that's tobacco-free. Buildings, vehicles, grounds, and parks that towns in Wake County may opt into via a resolution. Often, I'm asked, how do you enforce, or what are some best practices? And well, it becomes self-enforcing. So, because it becomes a community norm where people cannot use tobacco products. If someone is not aware of the policy, it is easily educated, or signs also help to communicate that message. Most people comply with the policies, provided that they're informed and they're aware. If violations occur, it's a best practice to work on educating residents, as well as current staff. You can provide warnings, education, or impose penalties if needed. Progress has been made throughout North Carolina. You can see the different shades of the municipalities and counties that have tobacco-free and smoke-free government-owned parks. In y'all's handout, I provided a little bit of a colored printing from the town of Apex that currently has smoke-free government buildings and vehicles, and there's other opportunities of where you are legally allowed to have authority for government grounds, parks, and recreation, and public places. Also included is a colored printout of Region 7, which includes Wake County and the town of Apex, just to show you guys geographically where there's currently smoke-free and tobacco-free regulations for government-owned parks. North Carolina has a wonderful resource to support those who are interested in quitting. The North Carolina Quit Line is set up to be a supportive environment for tobacco users 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, in multiple languages. There's web, text-based, as well as online services and phone for tobacco treatment. North Carolina is broken out into 10 different regions, and Apex falls into Michelle's region, and she would be here with me, but she's currently on maternity leave. Some of you have worked with her. And for further contact information with us at the branch, you have our contact information here, as well as some more resources for future reference. May I ask any questions, or anything from the group? I try to be succinct as possible.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. So, just to put context, is there a question related to what she presented tonight?
Can you speak to if towns and municipalities had divided parks versus greenways in terms of their rules regarding tobacco and smoke?
So, some local jurisdictions at the county or the municipal level are able to include that in their definitions, as far as parks or recreational facilities. The definition is if it includes parks, it could be specific locations, or recreation facilities could include greenways. I'm thinking places where you go fishing, recreational facilities.
Okay, so you're saying that both of those things would probably need to be specified, parks and recreational areas?
Yes, or you could say recreation grounds, or what is included here? Recreation areas.
Did you say, let me make sure I wrote this down right, that smoking in young adults under 18 years old has up 900%?
Of electronic cigarettes. So, electronic cigarettes are a big, can y'all see that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Electronic cigarette is a new and emerging product, and a lot of our youth under the age of 18, those who have taken the Youth Tobacco Survey, and this is from 2011 to 2017, Youth Tobacco Survey, has gone up 900% in use. And if you need exact numbers, I did bring the handout.
So, that's e-cigarette only?
Electronic cigarettes, yes.
And 430% in middle school?
Yes, for electronic cigarette products.
And the usage of just traditional tobacco products is on the decline?
So, no, right now, youth tobacco products of any tobacco products that's included here has increased. So, because of electronic cigarettes, it's gone from 27.6% to 28.8% in high schools.
So, that is including?
Yes, so it has gone up because of emerging products. So, youth are starting their initiation with electronic cigarettes or other emerging products.
If I could follow up on that, do you have data that includes tobacco proper but not e-cigarettes? Because I think that was sort of where you were going with that. Do you have data for tobacco products?
So, tobacco products?
Not including electronic cigarettes, because I don't consider that a tobacco product. It may be from a legal definition, I don't know, but...
It is. So, the state defines tobacco product as including nicotine, and because electronic cigarettes include nicotine, the state legislature has designated electronic cigarettes as a tobacco product.
Okay, so for the conversation?
It could be burned or heated differently.
For the conversation right now, let's assume tobacco product means a product with tobacco. Do you have data that shows the tobacco usage that doesn't include electronic cigarettes over the last several years? So, I assume there's a similar type of graph?
So, we would have to look up the Youth Tobacco Survey for just cigarette, that one question that was utilized.
But you have that data somewhere? Maybe not tonight, but...
But yes, I can look up for either smokeless tobacco, such as dip or chew, or cigarette smoke, or cigarettes, or cigarrillas, what are the other options? There you go, to see what else was surveyed at the Youth Tobacco Survey. I can look up those specific questions.
I'd find that interesting.
Yeah, that'd be interesting.
Because I know, maybe from a policy standpoint, they get lumped together because of the nicotine content. From the conversational, everyday person's standpoint, I think people do distinguish between the two. And so, it would be an interesting data point at some point. Doesn't have to be tonight.
Yes, I can work on that.
And can you speak to the relative risk of secondhand smoke from cigarettes versus e-cigarettes? I know you had the chart with the chemicals in it, but like, it's less, right?
So, this is secondhand smoke exposure, and what is kind of correlated with that, as far as stroke, low birth weight, SIDS, et cetera. Electronic cigarettes, we do have fact sheets that even the aerosol, secondhand from that aerosol, is very dangerous for the pregnant woman who's using it, as well as if there's secondhand exposure to the aerosol to, if a non-pregnant, or if that makes sense, a non-pregnant woman using electronic cigarette and a pregnant woman inhaling that aerosol, that has risk to the fetus. And then, the nicotine that's in the electronic cigarette for our youth harms brain development under age, I want to say around 21, 25, I'd have to look up the exact age. So, that is harmful for electronic cigarette use. It's not cigarettes, which are combustible, but electronic cigarettes.
So, lung-related symptoms are less risky, but other things like that you're talking about are maybe of similar risk?
So, there's some recent research that's come out, and I need to look up the specifics in that research article, but the electronic cigarettes, one of the questions is, what is the long-term effect? And that electronic cigarettes and the ingredients in that will say flavor of popcorn or cupcake. That was meant as a flavor to ingest through your stomach, but having it be added as an aerosol and inhaled is actually harmful to your respiratory system, and that there's damage from that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
All right, we now move to presentation number two. Mary-Kate Marukian, I hope I said that correctly, Transit Service Planner of GoTrain.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Portem, council members. Thank you for having me. I've been told you've heard quite a bit about the Wake Plan, so I'm going to try to dazzle you with this presentation. Thank you for having me tonight. So, as I'm sure you have felt on the roads, Wake County is growing at an incredible rate, as shown in this graphic. The majority of those moving here are adding to congestion because they're bringing single occupancy vehicles, and they are traveling alone in them. Everyone you see on the graphic with the little yellow circle, those are people traveling alone in their cars, and every day. And as you can see, heading to work, it slows it down quite a bit. So, in 2016, there was a voter-approved half-cent sales tax initiative to invest in transit enhancements for Wake County. Over the next 10 years, actually nine years now, the Wake Transit Plan will expand bus service, improve the passenger experience at bus stops, introduce Bus Rapid Transit, and a 37-mile commuter rail from Garner to Durham. So, this map highlights the major regional transit investments, including light rail, Bus Rapid Transit, commuter rail, and then key bus connections. What's missing from this map is the huge amount of investment in local bus service in Raleigh and the surrounding communities, which we'll discuss in more detail now. So, the Wake Bus Plan will increase the amount of 15-minute service, which is what qualifies as frequent service, every 15 minutes or better, to major destinations, expand bus service to Wake County communities that don't currently have service today, and improve passenger amenities with better waiting areas, new park-and-ride facilities, and better technology like real-time arrival signs and electronic maps. So, today, I'd like to talk with you about what does that mean for Apex? What do you guys get? You get some good stuff in Apex. The Holly Springs Express, the HSX, this will be operated by GoCarry. It'll connect, it's an hourly peak commuter service, which means it operates at peak hours only, so morning and evening. It'll run from Holly Springs with a connection in Apex, the downtown transfer point, which is currently Compare Foods, and then it'll run to Carri to connect at the Carri Train Depot. And that'll start operating in fiscal year '20, so most likely next fall. Feel free to jump in with questions, by the way. The 311, that's the service that currently operates in Apex. It will continue to run in Apex, however, as it operates every 30 minutes now, that will be reduced to hourly service to reflect the current demand, and that'll also match the other peak commuter services that operate within Wake County. There are a couple route changes also being made. This will operate a little bit more directly to serve Kit Creek Road and Davis Drive, which have a few more major destinations in the RTP area. And it will also connect at the same transfer point in Apex, providing connections to other more frequent services into Raleigh and Carri. The 305, this will, it's currently an hourly peak commuter service. This will be expanded to every 30 minutes at peak, and then expand to hourly service in the midday, giving folks an option to come back if you have a sick kid, something came up, you've got to get home, gives you that option. The route will also extend further. Currently, it terminates in the Lake Pine area. That'll extend further, connecting to the same transfer point I mentioned with the HSX and the 311, providing those key connection points. This will operate all day hourly on Saturdays and Sundays as well, with extended hours on Saturday.
Real quick, can you tell me what the terminal point is to the west now with the proposal?
Right now, it's Lake Pine Plaza. I don't know if you can see it.
Yeah, what's the proposed terminal?
The transfer point in downtown Apex near the Compare Foods.
Ah, okay.
Sure. So, as I said, transfer points a couple times. Right now, there is a plan to have an enhanced transfer point in downtown Apex. That site has not been finalized yet. It could be the Compare Foods, it could be another site. We'll work with the town to finalize those details. There will also be enhanced transfer points along Hillsborough, Jones Ferry, where other key connections will be happening. New and improved park-and-ride lots, Holly Springs, the Holly Springs Express. We want to get people on the route, make sure it's an attractive service with nice amenities, a nice place to wait, you feel safe, good lighting, maybe bathrooms, a place to buy tickets. Holly Springs, that will happen before that route opens, and then new updated lots in Apex and the Lake Pine Plaza lot as well.
Is this particular infrastructure a town joint, Town-Wake County joint thing, or is that Wake County building that?
This is the Wake County Transit Plan building that. There are other services, the community funding area, which we'll talk about in a moment, and that does provide the option for a 50-50 match. If Apex decides to operate local services themselves within the bounds of Apex, you can get matched funding for that.
What about if we wanted to enhance that before it's built?
Enhance that before, we'll take your money. We will take it.
I know that, but is that part of the... I mean, a building would be nice, or something a little bit more...
Sure, sure. Sure, everything's on the table. If there's something that you would like to contribute to, Mayor, this is on the record. I'd like to note that, so...
Well, I've been to 305 and the 311 many times.
It's a frequent service, so if that's something that you would like to enhance earlier, or enhance more than what is planned, that's definitely something that we would talk about, we could talk about. Yep, absolutely. I'm going to write that down.
So, make sure it's not built before we get a chance to...
It's about your last name, G-A-N-G.
That's a fair point.
No, that's a good question.
Mayor Manj, could you take a note that we want to be involved before they build it? Thank you.
And we've been working closely with your brilliant planning staff, Shannon Cox. She's been very involved. As I mentioned, the community funding areas program, there will be an opportunity for communities to apply for funding through the Wake Transit Plan, run their own transit service. Money will be available for studies and technical assistance, starting in fiscal year '19, which is now, and then for actual operating expenses and capital projects like bus stops, bike lanes, later on. And for information on that, that'll be coming soon from the Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, details on how to apply for that. That meeting is coming later this month. Stay tuned for those details.
These are all like cost-sharing evenly with town and county?
Yes. There was a market analysis performed on this map, I don't know if you have that on your screens, showing the areas that are most compatible with transit service based on density, employment calculations, where to connect with other major transit hubs. Based on that, recommendations were made for the type of transit service that would be most successful in these areas. I believe a couple initial options were identified for Apex, including a local circulator, as well as a demand-response service. Other communities have looked into things, Uber-Lift subsidies, more fixed route service. The Wake Forest has the Loop. That's most likely a project, for example, that will be funded 50-50 with Wake Transit Plan. But the town, there was a Western Wake comprehensive operational analysis. I think you had a presentation on that. Through that, that's where the two options, the circulator and the demand-response transit service were identified. The town's going through public comments and working through the priorities on which service to explore. So, most of the formal meetings have happened, but we are doing the tour. Wake County municipalities giving this presentation as it relates to their communities specifically. You can continue to look for pop-up events. We plan to, we're looking into coming to the market this Saturday here in Apex, talk with folks walking around about the bus, try to pressure them into getting on the bus. You can go online, goforwardnc.org/WakeTransit for those dates. There's also a video you can watch that gives a really nice overview of the plan, if you'd like to show that or post that on any of your social media pages. We are collecting feedback officially through September 10th, but the survey will remain online through the end of September, and we'll be compiling those comments and making any changes that we need to make through the end of September. Also, I'd like to give a plug for the Youth GoPass. Kids 12 and under already ride for free, but now children ages 13 to 18 can ride GoTriangle, GoRaleigh, GoCarri, and GoDurham buses for free with the Youth GoPass. It's available at all transit centers and a number of libraries, including the Wake Northern Regional Library. You can get your kids out of the car and onto the bus. Thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions now.
I have a question. Do you have ridership numbers?
I was just telling Shannon, I left mine on the printer, but they're not super high right now. I think the 311 per hour, I think it's 10, or a little less, and the 311 right now, I think it's around 15 an hour, perhaps a little less. But I will get you those exact numbers tomorrow.
So, the bus route, is it like you have to go from point A, your pickup, to point B, or can you stop along the way if you're going along the way?
Yeah, you can get off. You mean the...
Like, because currently, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the current route takes you to that destination, and you can't stop in between at random spots. And I've heard... And I've heard it's difficult to manage time schedules and stuff like that, when you have all these random stops along the way, but is there, I don't, I mean, it makes it more difficult to ride a bus if I have to go from A to B, but I don't want to go to B, I want to get off before B.
Right.
Because I don't want to backtrack, or it's a mile or two back.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So is there a plan to allow random exits from the bus?
So random exits, no, and it really depends on the type of service. So a limited-stop service would be more express-style service. Those are commuters. That's a point A, like a park-and-ride, where we would imagine people could park their car or get dropped off, and then going to a major destination. So that would be where we think a lot of jobs are, like a downtown Raleigh, or something like that, or the train station where they could get to other frequent routes within Carry, or things like that. So that, we don't like a lot of stops, because that slows the bus down, and it makes it less attractive and less competitive with a car. If it takes too long, you would just drive. But something, a more local-style service, yes, those, we do have lots of stops along the way, where it's, yeah, we purposely put it on roads where there's a lot, where there's lots of stuff, to use a technical term, shopping centers, grocery stores, Walmart, it's a big destination, so those we would, yes, it makes sense to have a lot of stops along those routes.
Just to be clear, they're pre-planned stop points?
Yes.
You don't do ad hoc stops?
No, no, and actually, our operators are not allowed to do ad hoc stops, right? But, I mean, for a local circulator, you can do whatever you want. If you wanted to do more of a demand-response, where somebody says, "I want to go from here to here," that's something that you could do as a locality.
Right. But those current ones are the ones you can stop? There's many stops in Apex on 311, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
There's one like in front of Daniels, there's one near the Beaver Creek, down there at Compare.
And it might, and it might be if somebody's just not familiar with the route, and it's a little intimidating to pull the cord and tell the bus driver, "I want to get off," so it might be confusing for first-time riders, I could see that.
This is probably a little detail, but would you be planning on putting charging stations in at the terminals for scooters and electric bikes, or something like that?
If there's a demand for it, that's definitely something we could look into. There's, there's going to be kind of a standard design that will be funded through Wake Transit, and as Mr. Gant so generously offered. If we were going to upgrade those facilities to something beyond that, if that was something that the town was interested in, we could do a partnership with the town, or perhaps that could just be a more expanded stop, if we wanted to use more funding for that. But yeah, if the demand existed, we would definitely look into that.
Okay. You mentioned up to 18-year-olds rides free. What does like an adult trip cost? What's the average cost?
Depends on the service. So regional, $2.25. Different local services charge different rates. We're actually in the middle of a fare study right now to kind of make it all the same regionally, so it's less complicated transferring between systems. I believe Go Car, or Go Raleigh is $1.25, Go Durham is $1, Go Carry $1.50. So it's kind of all over the map, depending on the service type. Go Triangle is the most expensive.
Do you have like a card that you like, just has money preloaded on it, kind of like the EZ Pass for the toll road? Is that kind of how it works?
You can get a monthly pass, or a weekly pass, or a day pass, but as part of the fare study, we are looking into options for smart cards. It's just a lot easier. People can load it online, use mobile fare technology, that's also something we're looking into. Anything to encourage people to get on the bus, everybody's on their, you know, it's mobile technology now, so that is something that we're hoping to achieve.
Last call. All right, thanks, Ms.
Thank you. Let me set that right.
All right, that concludes our presentations today. Before we get into the consent agenda, let me just take a quick reminder for everybody who's here, if you want to stick around and you didn't get one of the agendas, those are out on the podium, if you want to go grab one, help yourself. If you intend to speak tonight in one of the public hearings, or in the public forum, there's a guideline sheet that looks like this, that's also on the podium. So if you intend to speak, there are two things you need to do. One is be familiar with the guidelines, and two, sign up for the appropriate item here on the yellow sheets on the ledge there. I will be calling from that list when we get to those parts of the agenda tonight. At this time, I'll bring this, bring our attention to the consent agenda. We have consent agenda items that are generally considered to be non-controversial and are typically enacted with a single motion. However, if any council member wishes to pull an item for a later discussion tonight, they certainly may do so. So at this time, I'll ask, is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right. Consent agenda has passed unanimously. We now move to page four, the setting of the regular agenda. We have our printed agenda here, and I know of nothing from the town manager nor the town attorney that would amend that, so at this time, unless there's something specific from a council member, I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you. All in favor, oh, sorry, is there a discussion on the motion to approve the agenda? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We have set the agenda. We now move into time of public forum. Public forum is the time where you get to talk to us. We listen to you for three minutes, so whatever topic is relevant to Apex, interesting to you, and hopefully something that we would find interesting as well, please indicate. Did you need something? Pardon? Okay. All right. Where was I? Nick, in the future, let's get signed up on time. In the sign-up sheets for the public forum, I will be calling those names. You'll have three minutes to talk to us about what's interesting to you. I have three people who have signed up. Mr. Adenuri, looks like Mr. Jolly, and Mr. Beaver. So at this time, I'll call up here, Mr. Adenuri. As you come forward, oh, you're sending a delegate?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
He's got his needs to talk to.
All right, that's fine. We'll, and we'll have you come up and change the name on the sheet after you're done, is that all right? All right. And just before you begin, please state your name and address, and then watch the green light, yellow light, red light, okay? When it gets to the red light, you're done. But that'll be three minutes. You'll have a yellow light to remind you.
So you want me to?
Whenever you're ready, please feel free to begin.
Okay. Namaste and good evening. My name is Ananya Survi, and I am here on behalf of Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh and the Hindu community in the Triangle area. Briefly, I would like to explain the meaning and purpose of Raksha Bandhan Day. Raksha Bandhan literally means promise of protection. Raksha Bandhan is a festival of love and interdependence celebrated by Hindus since time immemorial. The main activity of the festival is to tie a raksha, also known as raki, around the wrist of another person. The sacred thread can be tied to anyone to express solidarity, oneness, and interdependence. For example, a sister ties a raki to her brother, a wife ties a raki to her husband, a priest ties a raki to his disciples, friends tie rakis to each other, and people tie rakis to soldiers and police officers. The raki is a reminder that those who are capable have a responsibility to protect the weak and the, in the family and society. Additionally, rakis are a symbol of love and solidarity. The festival of Raksha Bandhan also symbolizes peaceful coexistence and interdependence. The values and sentiments attached to this festival are worth inculcating by the whole of humanity. Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh has been celebrating Raksha Bandhan in the U.S. as Universal Oneness Day since 2004, with the simple idea that we should all love and protect each other. We have met with civic leaders and public safety officers throughout the country to recognize and appreciate their community service by tying rakis on them. We believe that when we celebrate Raksha Bandhan each year, it reassures that peaceful coexistence is a reality and not a fiction. It reminds us to lead a peaceful and happy life in this beautiful place. Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh USA Incorporated is a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt cultural organization. Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh promotes self-discipline, self-confidence, and a spirit of selfless service to the humanity through its structured value education program for Hindu children and adults. Currently, H-S-X operates 180 chapters nationwide, including three chapters in the Triangle. We have been celebrating Raksha Bandhan in the Triangle area by appreciating work done by the public safety officers and civic leaders since 2009. By tying a raki to you today, we thank you for your services to the community and request you to continue to serve and protect society. These are pictures of us tying rakis to police officers and firefighters. There's also pictures of us adopting a park and the Surya Namaskar Yajna, which is a yoga festival. This is the Guru Vandana, where we appreciate teachers and do like.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Oh, we're in now?
Yeah.
All right, can we, is there objection?
Let's do it.
All right. Well, if you don't mind, just to keep things moving, we'll do that while we have the next person come up, okay? We need to keep the meeting moving, and I don't want to minimize that, but, but I do, we do need to do that, because we have work to do tonight. But Ananya, would you mind coming up and just making sure your name is, is on here, please? Did I say your name right?
I think I wrote it yesterday, but I don't know if that's.
Okay, okay. What's that?
Or do you want us to come over there?
Maybe we'll do a little.
If we can be very brief, very brief indeed. You can go there, sir.
Thank you.
I think, I think I speak for everybody, and I thank you for your kindness and your gesture. We appreciate that. And I apologize for the nature of this, but I'll move on to the next item. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call Mr. Jolly up.
Glad I got to witness it. That was a, that was a beautiful ceremony. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Mayor, pro town council members, Apex citizens, I'm here tonight in front of you in support of stronger tobacco ordinances for.
Please state.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Bill Jolly, 1981, Lazio Lane. Been here about six and a half years or so, my family. Again, I'm here in support of stronger tobacco ordinances for our town. We've been working on this for, for a while, to put a personal story on Ms. Park's presentation. Thank you very much, Ms. Park, for coming tonight and supporting this. I appreciate it. So three, four weeks ago, my family and I, we've got a 20-year-old, 16-year-old daughters, and a foster child we're working on adopting right now, nine and a half months. We're down at Tybee Island Savannah, enjoying a beautiful day at the beach. We're right next to the pier. My 20-year-old, who has severe asthma, loves photography, goes up on the pier and asks me to help her carry her gear so she can get set up and take some, spend some time up there taking pictures. I just walked back down to our spot, right by the pier, and all of a sudden, my phone rings, and I was giving her a hard time, and I said, "What, are you tired already? You hungry? What do you need?" And to my fear, sheer terror, it was not my 20-year-old daughter. It was a Good Samaritan stranger. Kelsey was doing her thing, enjoying a beautiful day. Someone walked by, smoking a cigarette, not just standing by her, but in the general vicinity, and she had an asthma attack. So you can just imagine what's going through my head when I'm nowhere near my daughter, and some stranger is saying, "You need to get up here right now. Your daughter needs help." I could hardly speak. Tracy was right next to me. I said, "You need to run. Kelsey needs her inhaler." I took the baby. Thankfully, she was okay, but it took a while for her to calm down. That's what smoking can do to you. I've been living this for the last almost 10 years. I sold a treatment for genetic lung disease, got countless friends that have had lung transplants from tobacco. I sold a treatment for lung cancer, and 2012, I was appointed by the governor's office to North Carolina Advisory Committee for Cancer Coordination Control. As the Prevention Subcommittee Chairman, I got to help write the state cancer plan and do my little part to help make our state healthier. So this is one example. It's, it's a powerful example, it's a scary example, but this is just one story, and I understand how important and sacred individual rights are to citizens of Apex and our country, and I don't tread on those lightly. But your, your right should not infringe on my health. And then just to expand it, we all need to do our part. It's going to take a thousand, it's going to take a thousand little steps like this to get our country healthy. 18% of our gross domestic product goes towards healthcare in this country. So thanks a lot for letting me speak tonight and considering this. I really appreciate it, y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Jolly. Mr. Beaver?
Dick Beaver, Bryce White Lane. Thank you. Now that the tree policy has been finished, or the tree reports come in, and hopefully with council's blessing, the staff is now making it part of the town's policy. By the way, do you realize how much good air every big tree provides to all of us? So hopefully, my only tree comments will be to compliment the town as it goes forward with trees. My segue is, is this a dip-thong, to go from a tree to a truck? I would like to suggest, just to suggest, at this point, that there's no place for through 18-wheelers on the Peakway. Just think about it, and we'll work along with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beavers. All right, that concludes public forum, and at this time, I'll move into the time of public hearings. We have public hearing number one. This is a question of annexation, number 642 acres off of Twin Creek Road, and Diane Ken is presenting tonight.
Maybe we'll give him a few seconds.
All right, so all right, you to the site. The annexation is in the northern portion of our jurisdiction, north of US 64, off of Old Jenks Road. The property is a single-family home, and they are seeking annexation in order to get town services, including water and sewer. Staff does recommend approval of the annexation.
Okay, great. Any questions for Diane? All right, not hearing any. I'll open the public hearing and see that no one has signed up, so I'll close the public hearing and further matter back to council for a motion. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion to approve?
I have a question. What's the underlying zoning on this? Because if we, if we, if we annex it, and in the future they come back and want to build something, they can build per the code, right?
It's Sound Rule Residential, which is a one-acre density, and it's two acres.
Does it connect with the Colde? The Colde?
Does it connect with the cul-de-sac?
Yes, it's Twin Creek Road.
No, it connects to the right.
To the right.
Can it theoretically connect to the left as well, or is that going to be kind of off limits?
Yeah, it doesn't appear to connect to that cul-de-sac. It has a driveway that connects to Twin Creek.
So the underlying zoning map is not low-density, it's rural?
Mm-hmm. It's dark green. It's rural residential.
And the light green in that map is?
Residential agricultural. That's our old ETJ zoning, and that's actually a one unit per five acres.
And the yellow is medium-density?
The yellow is medium-density.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve?
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number two. This is also a question of annexation, about a half acre. This is annexation number 642 off of Price Wood Lane.
Yes, and that is out on Olive Chapel Road to our west. And this is a unique one, basically. This is the Linden, this is Linden subdivision that was approved previously, and they had to move their main road slightly to the east, and so this little strip of land will be where the part of the road will be, and so they need to annex it so that it can be a town road. We do recommend approval.
All right, thank you. If there are no questions for Diane?
Are there any questions for Diane?
Yes. So the original that we looked at and redone was further to the west. Wasn't there some discussion about the buffer between all that?
You can see it here, the light green. There should be. No, zoom it in. You can see where the light green is. We already annexed partially where the road is going to be, but they needed to move, shift the road slightly to the east. And so now, this would be annexed so that it can be town-maintained.
All right, thank you, Diane. At this time, I'll open the public hearing, and no one signed up to speak, so I'll close the public hearing and further matter back to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion on the motion to approve.
I'm not going to vote on this. I didn't vote to support that development, so.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Your non-vote understood. Public hearing number three, this is also an annexation, number 644, about 14 acres. Diane?
Okay, so this property is located off of Kelly Road, north of Apex Barbecue Road. It is essentially the location where these two subdivisions have been approved previously. They are requesting annexation in order to have public services, including water and sewer, and they are waiting to get their construction plans approved for the annexation to occur first. Staff does recommend approval.
All right, thank you. Questions for Diane? All right, we'll open the public hearing. No one signed up to speak, so I'll close the public hearing and further matter back to council for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We now get to public hearing number four. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, so if you'll pardon me while I get set up, because there are some legal things that we need to follow when we do this. The town council normally functions in the legislative capacity. Special use permit hearings are quasi-judicial, which means that the council acts essentially as a court of law. The burden is upon the applicant for the special use permit to put on evidence to show that they meet the criteria found in the town's Unified Development Ordinances, or the UDO. Anyone opposed to the application must put on an evidence of similar kind showing that the criteria have not been met. Testimony must be given under oath, and all testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent, material, and substantial pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute's competent evidence does not include opinion, testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters. Hearsay evidence will not be permitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make its decision based on the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing. The town council will now take up the case of special use permit 18 SUP 02 for the Olive Chapel Swim and Tennis Club located at 1221 Ainsley Place. At this time, I will open the public hearing and ask that anyone who intends to speak or give evidence tonight during this public hearing, please step forward to this area here. The town clerk will need to swear you in. While everyone is congregating, I'll ask the council just to make sure that you can locate your checklist sheet. There should be the six little squares on that sheet, and we will be using that as we go. All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to make sure I've identified the applicant, so who is presenting for the applicant tonight? Could you just, pardon, could you briefly come up to the microphone and state your name, just so that we know who?
Paul Flick. I'm an attorney from Raleigh, from Miller, Monroe, and Plyler, and I represent the applicant.
All right, very good. Thank you, Mr. Flick. And you have some supporters and intend to present evidence?
Correct.
That were sworn in? Okay, very good. And is there someone putting on an opposition tonight? How are you going to do that, sir? You weren't sworn in.
May I cross-examine if there's certainly nothing true?
So you plan to cross-examine but not present testimony?
Correct.
I think that may be okay. Let me just check with the town attorney.
We have to have a determination that the gentleman has standing.
Okay.
Or to act as a party and cross-examine witnesses.
Okay. Could you come up to the microphone while we verify your standing? And if you don't mind, we'll just work with the town attorney here to help verify your standing.
Okay. My name is Stan Thompson. I live at 3033 White Cloud Circle. The back of my building, my residence I live in, I can see the tennis courts clearly when the foliage is down during the winter and fall month after foliage is up. During this time of year, the foliage is up, I can see illumination going in the sky or anything coming through the foliage, but it's not as bad. So like you said, most of my problem is what happens six to seven months out of the year.
All right.
It's also noise.
Okay, pause here for a second. Is that sufficient to determine standing?
Okay, well, standing is actually a determination that the council has to make.
I see.
That neighbor has standing. It's not enough just proximity to, but he would also need to show that he has some sort of damages that's like special to him and not something that would apply to the neighborhood as a whole. He is free to present testimony as to what his experience would be from his location without necessarily being a party with standing. But that would mean that he would not have the opportunity to cross-examine witnesses.
So let me clarify. Is it your intention tonight to present your subjective point of view on this matter or to cross-examine the witnesses?
As much as I'm allowed to do, actually, Mayor.
Both? Oh, as much as, so as much as your...
If I can cross-examine if there's opportunity, if I, I mean, I may not need to cross-examine, but you know, we went through, you know, obviously, they were the one who had the ordinance changed, and I never had the testimony or chance to, you know, give cross-examination during their variance hearings and things like that, and I was just wondering if I had the opportunity at this quasi-judicial to do such things as necessary.
All right, well, okay, let me, thank you. Let me pause you here. So would it be appropriate here to confer with council to determine standing? Is that your guidance?
Yes. I can, I can give you what the courts have looked at as the criteria to determine whether someone has standing. Now, generally, the individual who asserts that they have standing would need to prove damages that are special and apart and different from that of the rest of the citizenry or neighborhood. Proximity is one factor. If there's an alleged diminution in property value would be another factor. Additional adverse impact could be another factor. But only a party with standing who can show that they have the additional special damages, special impact, would be entitled to act as a party to the actions and be able to cross-examine witnesses and put on testimony. It may also be helpful to note that the testimony that the applicant needs to provide is competent, material, substantial, and generally will be provided by experts. And so I would question what, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, that's correct.
I would question what his expertise is to be able to, if he doesn't have experts with him, to be able to provide competent evidence to the contrary as to what the applicant is putting on.
All right. Let me take the first, the first, pardon?
Could I ask, do you have?
Oh, please do.
Experts that will be with you to put on evidence of a similar nature as the applicant will be putting on?
No, I do not, but I've heard testimony given by the president, the Homer Association before, and he is not an expert engineer, and he was talking about lighting and things like that. The attorney is not a physicist, and he was talking about things like that.
Hold on, hold on. Go ahead.
But sir, we have, we have different hearings, different types of hearings through this process. We've had UDO amendments, which were legislative in nature, and those may have been an opportunity. I believe you spoke at those as well, but those were opportunities where non-expert testimony would have been permitted. So those are different types of hearing than what this is. This is a quasi-judicial, like a board of adjustment hearing. This is more like a courtroom, and the evidence that's presented has to be competent and material and substantial. So any evidence that you would also put on, including rebuttal evidence, would also need to meet that criteria. Does that help, Mayor?
Yes, and I believe I'd like to explore the nature of additional special damages. So it's my understanding from your, from when you've spoken here before, that you have a residence that is in line of sight when there are no leaves on the trees, and you've said that tonight, correct?
That is correct.
And you also have neighbors on either side of you who can say the same thing, correct?
That is correct.
So in order to have standing, as I've heard explained by the town attorney, what are your special additional damages that are different from other general neighbors next to you?
Well, on a personal level, sleep, whether it's 10:05 or 10:30 or something like that, you know, one of my cases with the pool is there's no enforcement of the people. Unlike the town, has locked gates, and a town employee locks the gates to their parks, and people at 10 o'clock are asked to leave. This particular facility...
Okay, but...
Plane can go on all night long.
So how is that, but the question is, how do you have special damages that's different from your next-door neighbor? How are you impacted in a way that this matter, this special use permit, if granted, would cause you damage that would not be the same for your neighbors? That's the criteria that I've heard the town attorney mention tonight in order to provide you with standing to give cross-examination. And so I'm trying to get from you, if there's nothing, then we may need to say the word "nothing." But what is the special damage for you that's different from your neighbors?
I can't speak for my neighbors, but their damages would be the same thing. But a lot of my neighbors I talk to come out and support me tonight. Most of them have the feeling that, you know, town council's going to do what they do and why kind of waste their time, but here I am tonight.
I'm going to cut you off right there because this isn't an opportunity to opine on what the town council does or doesn't do and whether we do it viciously, maliciously, or with compassion. That's not what we're talking about tonight, and I apologize for being a little bit brusque, but we're following a state-designated procedure. I'm asking the town attorney to help guide me through this, and I'm trying to make sure that we do everything correctly, and I'm not trying to suppress you or oppress you, but I want to make sure that we do it correctly, because if I don't, then we have trouble. So with that said, so far, and I'm saying this to the council at this point, I haven't heard anything that, in my assessment, gives you standing in order to cross-examine witnesses that are put up here by the applicant. And I will ask council if they feel the same or otherwise.
Maybe, maybe would he be, would he fit as a witness to express his concerns? Maybe that's the better...
Yeah, so, yeah, if I can, if I can, because that's okay, you're getting just a little heavy. That's all right. So the question on the table right now, because he, I want to explore the question whether or not he can give subjective observations, but that's the second question. Let me address the first question first, which is, does Mr. Thompson have standing with, by having special additional damages in order to put him in a place where he can cross-examine? I have heard the answer is no.
Okay. I was wondering about, you said proximity is one factor versus other neighbors. Are we talking about proximity of a nearby house versus the proximity of a house that's on the other side of the neighborhood?
Correct.
Obviously, that would be a little different when you're close versus, are we counting the whole neighborhood or are we counting just the immediate neighbors nearby?
So to be clear, Mr. Thompson, just for Councilman Gant's clarification, you're in a townhouse, correct?
Correct.
And you're, and you have, you have a townhouse neighbor that is on one side of you and one on the other. So it would be fair to say that their homes are exactly the same distance to the concerned tennis courts, correct?
Correct. And actually, back on April 4th, when the ordinance was changed, one of my next-door neighbors, he also did testify.
Wait, wait, that's not the question to you, sorry. The question to you is, are your neighbors on either side of you the exact same distance because you live in a townhouse? There's, you're not any specially closer or than any other than your next-door neighbors on either side? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so...
He is closer than the majority of the neighborhoods.
That is true. That is true, but that's going to be true. The, hold on. The, he, he, the neighborhood goes half a mile back.
Right.
So that's always going to be true for somebody, but I want to be clear, in order to have standing to cross-examine, according to the criteria set forth by the state, he has to have additional special damages. And Mr. Thompson, I regret to say, I haven't heard him being able to state what is additional and special damage to him that would be different from his adjacent neighbors. And that, that would, by the state statute, would not give you standing to cross-examine. It would be unfair to the applicant if I did allow you to cross-examine. I mean, council needs to make a determination with me, but I haven't heard anything, and if, if you have, or if you think there is something, let's identify it.
If that's the understanding of proximity, which you mean, then I agree with you.
Yeah, and this, proximity is a factor, but it's not enough to create, to give you standing.
Not necessarily, or at least permanent.
Right.
And I don't know how to determine special damages.
Sure.
So, I mean, are we talking about, is something created a nuisance, like when he spoke about noise or things like that? So I don't know what, how to determine special damages, other than is there a nuisance complaint or something? I don't even know how to do that.
Yeah, and unless you can clarify what makes the damages unique to you, then I don't see how you have standing to cross-examine. Do you follow me?
Yes, but if I'm suffering damages and hardships, some of my neighbors are also having damages. Just because I'm the only person here, I mean, we should also have a right to come.
But Mr. Thompson, what you just said was your neighbors have the same damages you have, right? You just said that. So how does that give you additional special damages? To have standing, right? If you had, if you had, I'm sorry, I don't want to repeat. I personally don't find anything here that says that there are additional special damages. I'm not trying to be hard on you, Mr. Thompson, but I want to make sure this council's protected from doing something that is challengeable by law, and we have to do that. So with the council, without objection, if the council doesn't object, what I'd like to do is declare that there is no standing in this case, but I would like to allow a slot for you to present subjective observations when the time allows. Would that, would that be acceptable to council?
Yes, please.
Yes, please. Yes.
I'd, I'd like to get advice from our town attorney specifically on this. Does he have standing, in your opinion, or not? That means, I'm not a lawyer.
So I, I can't.
You can't advise us?
I, I can't tell you whether I believe he has standing or not, maybe that's your decision to make. However, what I will say is that it, it would be his burden to prove to you all that he has standing, and I've not heard him express anything that would indicate special damages of the type that you would typically find in an individual who has standing.
Good, thank you.
I would ask that if we are going to make a slot for Mr. Thompson to be able to speak at some point as, as a witness, to present his eyewitness testimony as how he's impacted by this, that he would be sworn in.
Yes. So, and Mr. Thompson, I, I really wish you had come up and been sworn in when everyone else did. So now we need to wait for you to be sworn in. Would you like to still present tonight your subjective testimony?
Yes, Mayor.
All right, then you need to come over here and be sworn in. We'll, I'll give you a call when, I've made a mark here on my agenda, so I'll give you a call when we get to that point for the town attorney. My intention is to do that between steps 10 and 11, which would be prior to closing arguments. Would that seem reasonable to you?
Yes.
All right, all right. All right, thank you. Appreciate everybody's patience. These quasi-judicial public hearings are a bit, can I say onerous? I'll say onerous, they're a little bit onerous. At this time, I'd like to give each council member, including myself, an opportunity to do three things. One, describe any communications about this case that have been made prior to tonight's hearing. Two, to describe any relational or financial conflict to the case, if any. And three, is to, to state whether or not you can base your decisions impartially based on the, the competent evidence presented at this hearing. And as per usual, I'll start with Councilman Jensen.
I've had no conversations, other than what I've seen in the past, that were, that were up here, but not specific to this, in a public forum. I have no relations, and I believe I can make a decision.
I have, besides the meeting we had last time where we heard some of this information, I have not had no communications or additional knowledge, and I think I can judge fairly.
I've had no related communications, have no conflicts, and can be impartial.
Okay. I have had some conversations about half a year ago, it seems like, when I went to visit the site at the request of a few individuals. I did spend a few minutes out there observing the site. That was clearly way before we had a special use permit or a quasi-judicial public hearing. With that said, mostly it was observations. I, I don't have a relational or a financial conflict related to this case, and if I need to vote, I can cast a vote that is impartial and based on the evidence presented tonight.
Mayor, I have no relational or financial conflict in this. Likewise, about six months ago, when this item was brought to us for the UDO amendment, I did observe pictures and see this area and some things that were talked about, but have not had any specific visit to the site since that.
All right.
And I can make a decision impartially, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would like to ask the council to recuse myself. I feel like, I, I went in April of this year before I knew this was a quasi-judicial issue. Viewed the site, had extensive conversations with representatives of the community, and I feel like it's appropriate for me to recuse myself of this decision.
All right, and before I ask for a motion from the council for recusal, which is part of the process, I also went there about the same timing, and I was just wondering if you could elaborate a little bit on what you think moves you over the line to asking for a recusal.
So some of the recommendations that I had made were put into this agreement. So I feel like that is, that may draw the line on impartiality.
Okay, all right. That's fair enough, or at least sounds, sounds like a fair response to my question. How about that?
[laughing]
Without judging the response, let me see if council feels the same. Is there a motion to recuse Councilwoman Killingsworth?
I'll make a motion to recuse.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for recusal for Councilwoman Killingsworth? Discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, you are recused. You don't have to leave, but if you want to ensure that you're not part of the conversation, it would be fine if you wanted to step down or whatever for a few minutes. And just to alleviate any confusion from anybody else. And I'm gonna make, sorry, I'm just gonna make a note here. Okay, since this has been filed as a quasi-judicial public hearing, real quickly, has anyone gone to specifically view the site, knowing that it's coming as a quasi-judicial public hearing, and it's not a reason to, to be excluded? We just need to get it on the record?
I have not.
I've driven by and looked at it, but that, does that count?
Since you knew it was gonna be quasi, okay. No, it's, it's fine to say it, yeah.
From Olive Chapel.
Okay, sure.
I have not, since I knew it was quasi-judicial.
Okay, I have not either.
I have not.
All right. All right, at this time, I'm sorry, was it Mr. Flick? Flick, okay. At this time, I'll call Mr. Flick for an opening statement only, and then we will follow a semi or a quasi courtroom process as we go through.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Pro-Tam and members of the council. I'm not embarrassed to be here. I got stuck on a boat on the river on Sunday that broke down at my neighbor's inviting, and so I got a little more sun than I had intended on that day. As you know, I represent the Olive Chapel Swimming Tennis Club in what's been a long process to try to get some tennis lights operational on that facility, and so we're before you on a special use permit application. First, we appreciate your consideration and your time tonight, because this is very important to over 700 families that belong to the club. Many of them are here with us tonight as a show of support, so that they know you understand this is important to them as well. Second, I want to commend the staff. We've worked together to try to find a solution to this issue with the members of the club, and I think we've gotten to a point where we can achieve a solution that's best for everybody on this issue. We don't have anything to hide. This is what it is, and I think you'll find from expert testimony tonight that we comply with all of the standards in the UDO, and I urge you to, to judge us as you should as a quasi-judicial hearing. You'll see in the application and the staff report, as I said, we've been through a long process to get here. You may recall that the reason we're here is that the club, after having neighborhood meetings and discussion, determined to redo these tennis courts that have existed for some time. This is an existing recreational facility. You can see on the slide that's before you, the tennis courts are beside a pool with fairly extensive parking lot, and that's been there and in use by the community for many years. When they made the determination that the courts needed to be resurfaced, they talked about the idea of lighting the courts, and they had open meetings, they had people there, they hired Court One, which is one of the most respected tennis court construction companies around. They got with the lighting company and designed the design of the lights. They went to the town and got it permitted, they had it inspected, it was metered. All of this was done at great expense to the club. After those lights were turned on, and as a complaint came in from one of the neighbors, the town determined that the UDO wasn't met because of this existing facility and the lighting standards that were in the UDO at the time. What you'll hear from our expert witness tonight is, and you may have heard this during the UDO application, amendment application, that the standards that are in the UDO for tennis court lighting at current time are equivalent to parking lot lighting, not safe recreational tennis play. So the other unique thing that I want you to know, as we open the hearing this evening, is that this is a unique situation, as I say, in which the facility existed, and some of the things that I believe you'll hear about as complaints exist today without the lights being turned on. The, the issues of somebody jumping the fence and playing basketball or doing whatever after 10 o'clock have nothing to do with what's before you on this special use permit. As you'll see by the application and by the staff report, the club has agreed and has already installed an automatic cutoff, so that the lights go off at 10 o'clock when and if they're in use. You also will understand that at a 10 o'clock cutoff, there's not a lot of lighting in the summertime to be done on those courts, probably an hour and a half, two hours at a maximum. Of course, the most important thing, I think, as we talked about standing and testimony and cross-examination, is that you know under your DO, your, your UDO, that you're to consider the application for the special use permit, the relevant supporting materials with that application, the staff's report, which indicates to you that the lighting plan meets the supplemental standards under the UDO, and the evidence that's presented to you that's competent at tonight's hearing. It's not about what happened at the last application, it's not about what somebody said at a meeting, it's about the evidence that's before you to determine whether or not it meets the criteria under your UDO. The staff report, as I say, states that the lighting plan meets all of the supplemental standards listed in the UDO. So what I'm gonna tender tonight are three possible witnesses, one for sure. Mr. Bruce Fraser joins us tonight from Cincinnati, Ohio, as a sports lighting expert, and he's gonna walk you through what's on these courts, and how it compares to other sports lighting, and what's safe for recreational play, and any other questions that you might have for him. If necessary, I have Chris Davies, who's the president of the association, who can speak to you about what's out there. The 10 o'clock cutoff, the agreement by the club to go with additional landscaping, additional screening, all of those kinds of things that we've tried to comply with staff recommendations on. And Tammy Sammeford, who is the, Sammeford, who is the community manager from Professional Properties Management, also here, should you have questions, that can be answered by her relating to the club and its execution of this plan. All of those things, I believe, will show you tonight that we meet the standards for the UDO, the special permit, and the lighting that's already existing at this long time recreational facility can then be utilized as it was designed, installed, permitted, and planned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flick. Does staff have an opening statement?
I do not.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite staff to come make the presentation.
Good evening. Just to kind of give you an idea of where we are in the town, this is located right off of Olive Chapel, kind of halfway smack in the middle of town.
Before you continue, do you normally do something else first?
I do, and I always forget it, and I apologize for that. My name is Shelley Mayo. I work for the Town of Apex as a planner. I've been here as a professional planner for five years now, and I have a master's degree in city planning from UNC Chapel Hill. Those are my professional criteria.
All right, thank you.
So just to step back, the proposal under review today is located just off of Olive Chapel Road, kind of smack in the middle of Greater Apex, not necessarily traditional Apex, but Greater Apex. It's off of, it's on Ainsley Wood Place. Property is about 3.64 acres, and what is before you today is a request, as the attorney said, for a lighting plan. As you can see on this, the property is currently zoned high-density, single-family conditional use. All of these kind of mustardy brown colors are that high-density, single-family. This is high-density, multifamily, I'm sorry, yes, high-density, multifamily, that's the townhome portion of the development. And then surrounding them is primarily medium-density conditional zoning, with a few of our other zoning districts to the northwest and northeast. This is, this is map. Just to give you an idea, this is what, this picture dates from about 2015 from aerial photography, so this is what was out there at the time. Oh, no, actually, I apologize. This is from January, so this is showing you how it is out there at the moment. Some of the other slides that you'll see have slightly older aerial photography, that's because this was provided by a contractor for the town, the other was provided from Google Maps. Google doesn't update as often as our contractor does. What can you do? So that just gives you an idea. Here's the basketball court, the two tennis courts, and a couple of pickleball courts. The applicant held a neighborhood meeting on May 24th, 2018. Staff reviewed the list of residents and noticed that three owners had changed between when the original board of adjustment application happened and when this special, when this neighborhood meeting went out. So we asked that the applicant hold a second neighborhood meeting for those new three, three property owners. They did so on August 27th, 2018. Both of those neighborhood meeting reports are attached to the staff report. Planning worked with the applicant on a UDO amendment, which was approved in April 2018. That UDO amendment now requires a special use permit to be approved for renovations to existing lighting at private recreation facilities where the light levels exceed the normal UDO standards for recreation areas. The full text of the new requirements is on the last page of your staff report, page three, on the bottom half of the page. These are the photometric measurements within the court. The, actually, let me back up. The applicant is requesting approval for upgraded court lighting for the newly resurfaced courts. They installed 12 new light poles and updated three existing poles, for a total of 24 LED light fixtures on them. The layout of the poles is shown here, you can see, you can kind of see the heads through This use is required to meet all of the standards that we discussed. Staff has evaluated the standards and believes that all of them have been met, as I'll show in just a moment. These are the actual measurements. We actually had, we actually requested that the applicant retake new actual measurements in July. When they had taken the original measurements for the board of adjustment, those were taken at three feet above ground, so roughly where my fist is now. Our ordinance actually requires that they be taken at grade level, because there is a significant difference in the lighting. You'll tend to get a much higher, brighter number here than you will down at the ground. The applicant did so for us, and all of those measurements that are shown on here are those new measurements. There's a chart here that gives you the minimum and maximums inside of the court. This is also summarized in your staff report. Just, I'm gonna give you the UDO standard, just briefly summarize that, which is in that table, and then what is actually shown. Average illumination for most private recreation facilities in the UDO is 10-foot candles. What you see here is 39.7-foot candles. There's an average to minimum ratio that's required, it's a consistency standard, so that you try to avoid hot spots and low spots. The UDO requires a maximum of four to one. The applicant is showing slightly above at 4.05 to one. The UDO requires that spillover at the property line be less than .3-foot candles. The applicant is showing 0.0. The height of the poles, the maximum allowed in the UDO is 35 feet. These fixtures are installed at 20-foot poles. As the UDO requires, the light fixtures have been fitted with the manufacturer's glare package. This is difficult to see on here, but it does show the foot candles in the perimeter. Once you get about, to out here, the light levels are very, very low, just showing that the cutoff for the manufacturer's glare package and for the lights themselves dims very quickly once you get off the court.
What is the black line and blue line? I'm sorry.
Can't get it too enlarged. It's just a gradation line. If my memory serves, this is about two foot candles, if I recall, and this is about either one and a half or one. So it's just a rough line to kind of show where that generally is.
And the measurement is a, some kind of thing, you sit on the ground, it's able to see the light?
Basically, a box that registers light. It's just got a photo cell on top, so that it, if you wanted to take it outside at noon... It's just got a photo cell on top so that it, if you wanted to take it outside at noon, you could take it outside and see what it is. The foot candle is essentially just, it's an equivalent roughly of how much light a candle would throw off at your feet, is kind of how it got its name. And so it's just a unit of measurement to kind of give us something we can all compare across these different projects.
And basically the downward light?
Pretty much. You can also take side measurements as well. Our ordinance doesn't address those, but I have seen them done before, just to kind of get an idea of glare or of visible light as opposed to impactful light. You know, the difference between when you're driving on a road past a gas station, what you can see on the road versus what you can see at the gas station, kind of that thing. Just to, there's a standard in the ordinance that also mentions that there's a required type A buffer for any property, on any property line that is within 100 feet of the actual court. This is just giving you measurements from the court to the closest property line. This is 260 feet. This is 78.4 feet, roughly, 78.4 inches. And this is roughly the property line where the group of town homes where Mr. Thompson lives is, and those are about 195 feet or so there. This is the landscaping plan that was submitted by the applicant. We worked with them to come up with additional landscaping. As you can see, this is installed already here, and there's a long row of arborvitae all along through here.
Can you go back to the, okay, that one, is that, can I ask you a quick question? Are those all evergreens, is that?
This, these are all evergreens here, these smaller circles, these are green giant arborvitae. These are deciduous trees. Again, deciduous, deciduous, deciduous. So there's a long line of green giant arborvitae here, there's an additional tree line back here. These are also evergreen. And then we have, pretty much these larger circles are all taller deciduous shade-type trees. Everything in gray is existing, everything in green is being proposed by the applicant. These are oakleaf hollies, they get to be about 20 feet tall. And there's a cluster of them here, particularly to provide that kind of buffer along through here, although the existing arborvitae, in staff's opinion, do provide that buffer for that 78-foot distant house. And then there's some additional ones here to also provide some additional glare protection. And then they were kind enough to throw in one more deciduous just to make it nice and balanced. Some of us like nice, balanced things, so we want that. The applicant's proposing 15 new hollies, and they're being planted at a height of seven to eight feet tall. The applicant's also providing an eight-foot-tall fabric privacy screen around the existing fencing, which is to basically minimize any impact from the light glaring down from the fixtures onto the courts, because when they're new, they're fairly, not shiny per se, but they're a little more reflective than they have been already.
Is that on the entire court or just the south side here?
My understanding is that's around the entire court. But I'll let the applicant confirm that when it's his turn, if that's okay.
Yes.
Okay. There are three conditions that staff has worked out with the applicant that they have agreed to. The first one, they've already put into place, all court lights will automatically turn off at 10 o'clock PM every night. Additional evergreen landscaping will be planted around the southern side of the tennis courts to provide extra screening from the lights. The landscaping will be a minimum of six feet tall at the time of planting. The landscaping plan does specify seven to eight feet tall, but that was the wording that we worked out before we actually got the landscaping plan. So that's why there's a little bit of a disconnect, but the seven to eight feet tall is what they're proposing. And an eight-foot-tall, solid-color fabric privacy screen will be attached to the existing fence to provide additional screening from the glare of the light reflecting out the surface court. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
All right, thank you. At this time, we move into council, essentially cross-examining staff presentation. So you have any other questions for?
Something on there, sorry about that.
No, that's okay. There may be formals, but we're not black tie formals.
Check it list.
That's right. I'm not hearing any? All right, before you, before you leave, let me see, I believe you may have an opportunity for cross-examination, Mr. Flick. Do you have any cross-examination on the presentation? All right, okay. All right, thank you, Shelley. All right, this time I'll ask the applicant to come up and make their presentation and call any expert witnesses that you wish to. And if you don't mind, what we'll do is, we'll do them one at a time and give us an opportunity to ask questions after presentation of testimony, and we'll give staff an opportunity to follow as well.
Sure.
And then we'll, when we're done with that, we'll move on to the next one. Sound good?
That's perfectly fine, and if it's okay with the mayor and council, I'll ask Mr. Frazier questions and let him respond.
Yeah, you're allowed to lead the witness in this quasi-judicial proceeding.
He knows more than I do, so I can't really lead.
As long as he can make the statements definitively.
Would you please state your name for the council, where you're from, and what's your current occupation?
Good evening, my name is Bruce Frazier. My company is Frazier Reps. We're the exclusive sports lighting representative for LSI Lighting, who's a fixture manufacturer located in Cincinnati, Ohio, which is also where I reside.
Are these LSI lights that we saw on the pictures that are at the Olive Chapel Swimming Tennis Club?
Yes, they are.
And have you actual firsthand knowledge of that type of light, that manufacturer of light, and the actual lights that are on the Olive Chapel?
Yes, I do.
Could you tell the council what your current duties and responsibilities are with your employment?
Okay. So as I said, we're the, we're a manufacturer sales rep. We are the exclusive sports lighting representative for LSI's products. I previously was employed by them until January of 2017 for a period of 30 years. And while I was employed with them, my activity was mostly related to sports lighting projects during that tenure as well.
Fair to say then that you have pretty significant knowledge regarding these LSI lighting systems?
Yes, that would be correct, and specifically in relation to tennis court lighting, we've lit thousands of courts, both domestically and internationally over that 30-year period.
I think it's important for council to understand, but if you could, just tell us how tennis court lighting has changed in the 37 years that you've been involved in that.
Well, there's basically two sorts of types of sports lighting in general, and they apply to tennis courts. So traditionally, you see a lot of projects that had higher poles, 40, 50, 60-foot-high poles, with amable floodlight-style products, so they're tilted up and they're pointed out. That's what you'll see on a lot of older installations where they use fewer poles, but the fixtures are much higher up in the air. So the system that we sell is what's called a cutoff lighting system. So the primary difference and the key difference in how it relates to limiting impact of the light to the neighborhood is that the fixtures are parallel to the ground, there's no tilt angle involved. So you have all the light going down and being projected forward, and so we're concentrating 95% of the light on the court surface, and we're limiting the spill light as much as we can, as well as the visible brightness of the fixtures is limited from areas outside of the court.
Are you familiar with a company called Court One?
Yes, I am.
And how are you familiar with them?
Court One is a tennis court construction company located here in Raleigh. They are a customer of ours. On most tennis court projects that they construct, they'll buy our lighting system for, to install as part of that project. We've been working with them for 25 years.
And did you work with them, in fact, in this particular project?
We did.
And how does that happen? Do they, you try to sell something to them, or do they contact you and ask you for your opinion and recommendations?
They'll generally contact us on a project-by-project basis. In this case, they would have sent us a site plan of what they were building, we would have prepared a lighting plan for them, which showed the locations of the poles, the number of fixtures, the projected performance of that lighting system in terms of the light levels and in terms of the spill light as well.
So they would be relying on your expertise on every tennis court installation they do for lighting?
That would be correct.
And how do you decide what lighting system to choose for use on a project like this one?
Well, we try to follow guidelines that are set forth by various organizations, like the American Sports Builders Association. They work in conjunction with the USDA, which is the United States Tennis Association. They publish guidelines for all types of court construction criteria, including lighting. We also follow the guidelines of the IESNA, which is the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America, who also has sports lighting criteria as well.
So we don't get out of line with the council. Let's talk about those standards and go back to your design of the lights in just a minute. What kind of familiarity you have with writing construction standards for the kinds of organizations you just talked about?
So I've been a member of the American Sports Builders Association for 30 years. Again, they work in conjunction with the United States Tennis Association to develop construction guidelines. I have personally been involved in writing the lighting specifications for their booklets regarding lighting, and they've revised that booklet two or three times, and each of those times I've provided them with, with information on, on how their guideline should look.
Do those guidelines suggest what is a safe and reasonable lighting standard for recreational play?
Yes.
And what is it that they suggest as a safe and reasonable standard?
So, in particular, the ASBA and the USDA guidelines, the lowest level of suggested light levels are what they call Class III, which is an average of 50-foot candles. The IESNA, which is a separate organization, in their guidelines, they have a Class IV, which is one lower, which they describe as recreational, and that's an average of 30-foot candles.
Can you describe for the council what the higher levels are on Class I and II facilities where you might play a tournament or a high school match?
Yeah, so Class I, by the ASBA standards, is 125-foot candles, and Class II, by the same standards, is 75-foot candles. And generally, the way that they define those classes is that higher levels of play fall into the, to the higher classes because of the speed of the ball is greater.
And are you familiar that the staff report, well, the staff report, if you will note, shows 39.7-foot candles at court level as the average. Does that seem like a reasonable foot candle level for recreational play?
It does.
And if, the standards in the UDO, which I think you heard staff justify to just a moment ago, had 10-foot candles for recreational play, is that an adequate standard?
That would normally not be accepted as an adequate light level for recreational standards. In fact, you know, I would almost, I've been involved with other cases where they've considered anything below 30-foot candles as being unsafe for the players as far as somebody getting hit in the face with a ball or not being able to track the ball properly.
When Court One came to you to design a system that now exists at Olive Chapel, what did you, what was your recommendation to them?
Basically, what was installed was our recommendation for recreational play. I think I did notice one difference, there's 15 poles and not 12 poles for, for whatever difference it makes, but there's 24 fixtures on 15 poles. But that's, that's what we recommended, we recommended 20-foot poles and that quantity of fixtures in those locations.
And is that the LSI blade system, is that how it's referred to?
It is, yes.
And have you actually been on-site to witness these lights in those tennis courts as being installed?
I have.
The system, as I understand it, also has some advantages over old-style systems in energy use and light color, is that correct?
Yeah, so this is an LED lighting system. Previous tennis court lighting systems were primarily metal halide. So with the efficiency of the LED lighting, we can generally cut the energy use legion in half. So these are about 500-watt fixtures in round numbers, where we would have generally used 1,000-watt metal halide fixtures for the same, to achieve the same light level. So the energy savings is substantial. There's a lot of other advantages with LED that I can go into if you want me to.
How about the difference in light color? I believe that you said earlier, these are a wider light and improved light color rendering.
Yes, so they're typically wider, without getting too technical, the light, the correlated color temperature of the light is about 5,000 Kelvin degrees. So it's a wider light, it's more of a pure light, it renders colors more accurately. So the same CCT for a metal halide lamp would be somewhere in the range of 38 to 4,000 K. So this is a wider light.
And the blades that you described, they can be set so that they are precise with where light goes and that there's very little overspill, is that correct?
That's correct. So most of the light is thrown forward and downward. One of the advantages of LED lighting is that you can be very precise with how you project the light, much more than you could have been before with a metal halide system. It's very directional.
I guess what I'm saying is you, you're the experts that designed how these would be set.
Yeah.
And the way they currently exist on the courts.
But that, what was installed is basically what we designed, yes.
When you were out there on the courts, did you notice that whether your manufacturer's glare shields are properly installed on these lights?
Yeah, so there is an optional glare shield or rear cutoff shield, we also refer to it as, that has been installed on all the perimeter fixtures. So the purpose of that is to provide further sharper cutoff outside of the court, and it also acts as a shielding mechanism for visibility of the lights.
I believe when you and I first spoke, you identified this system to me as the most neighborhood-friendly system available, is that correct?
That's correct. Again, referring to it generally as a cutoff lighting system, we've installed this system in a lot of very sensitive areas with neighbors. You won't find a system or another manufacturer's similar system that will do a better job than this, especially versus a floodlighting-type system.
Are you familiar with what fabric privacy screening is that goes on fences around tennis court?
Yes, it's fairly common.
And are there different heights and configurations and use on parts of fence instead of all of the fence that you're familiar with?
Well, there's different heights of the material, so some, some installations, they'll go from the top all the way down to the bottom. Other installations, they'll go from the top down to maybe two foot above the bottom. Others, there'll be two foot from the top and two foot from the bottom, so there's different heights of the screen.
And what is the impact of that screen on the light for those folks outside of the court?
So the primary benefit of this, of that windscreen is going to be, it's gonna hide the light level, the light illumination that you see on the court surface itself. That would be the primary benefit of it. And there's different opaqueness of that windscreen, too. Some of it is fairly transparent, others is more opaque, so.
So based on what you've seen and what you know, does this design that you did avoid significant adverse impacts, avoid being a nuisance, and minimize adverse impacts? avoid significant adverse impacts, avoid being a nuisance and minimize adverse impact of the lighting on the courts?
Yes.
And does this design minimize the environmental impact outside of the courts?
Yes, we believe it does.
And when you were out on those courts, did you note whether or not these are installed properly so that they are less than 35 feet in mounting height?
Yes, they're at 20, on 20-foot poles, yes.
And I believe you testified earlier, but will you remind me that the manufacturer's glare shields were in fact installed on these?
Yes, I did observe that they were installed.
And that they were designed by you and aimed by the contractors so their beams fall primarily within the playing area and the immediate surroundings?
That is correct.
That's all the questions that I have for this witness. If any of you have questions you'd like to pose, I tender them to you at this time.
All right, thank you. At this time, if counsel has cross-examination questions for the expert testimony presented by Mr. Frazier, now's your opportunity.
So was the plan to put the screening all the way around the entire fencing?
It is, and I'm happy to have the president address those physical issues with the, I don't know that Mr. Frazier's privy to what the plan is other than we did offer as a condition under the application that we would do eight-feet screening on all four fence sites.
How many feet? Eight feet?
Oh, eight feet high, yes. I'm sorry. I was trying to ask how many feet that was when we go all the way around the fence.
No, I was interested to know how tall it was.
Working with staff, eight feet tall and a primary color meaning no signs or markings such that it would be an issue with the Town of Apex sign ordinance or anything like that. So plain, I don't know that we-
Well, let me interrupt you for a second. I just want to make sure, so if Mr. Frazier didn't present that testimony, but that may come a little bit later, that's what I'm understanding, Mr. Frazier?
Okay.
Hold on, that's all right. We'll bring them up at the appropriate time. So Mr. Frazier's expertise is on the design and the impacts and those kind of things?
Yeah.
All right. Do you have a question?
I do. Mr. Frazier, you said that, or I believe you mentioned the spillover levels at the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Could you use the mouse and point on the screen there what property line the spillover was measured at?
That there, these three points which is here, here, and here. I guess you could, oops.
Yeah, there should be some at the bottom, too.
So there's some on the sidewalk as well here.
But that's not, they'd be further away, that's-
That's inside the parking area there, along the parking area.
Okay, so that's not the property line on the south there. That's just the parking area.
You can go ahead if you can point that out to him.
I'm just, sorry, I'm not trying to-
I think there was a nerve or one-
I'm just showing the second map that has more numbers.
Let's clarify what the appropriate question is for Mr. Frazier.
What was the spillover light with the new system installed, the measurement?
Does Mr. Frazier present testimony on that?
I thought he did, but it was that staff.
Yeah, but we can, that's all right. If you want to, there will be an opportunity for a final question if you want to hang on to that one. We'll do that at the end.
So, yeah, the only thing I will say in reference to that is that all the guidelines that we go by indicate that you should measure the light levels at three foot above the court. Now, that's on the court surface itself. Generally, when we're measuring spill light levels, we'll measure on the ground.
All right.
For what it's worth.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes. Other questions for Mr. Frazier as an expert on lighting systems? All right, let me ask staff, do you have any cross-examination questions?
Just a quick clarification. And I'm not certain if this is pointedly for you, Mr. Frazier, or not. If it's not, please let me know. Was this particular diagram that has the external light foot candle measurements, was that provided by your company or by an alternative company?
The actual measure, field measurements?
Not the field measurements?
Oh, no, that was provided by me.
Okay. And based off of this, do you recall whether the black line represents one or two foot candles? If you don't recall, that's fine.
I don't recall, and I can't see it well enough to remember.
That's fine.
So that, I mean, to explain to you in general what that is, so that's a contour line that indicates the occurrence of a specific light level, which is kind of what you were going at. I just don't remember what the value is for those light levels. I would be happy to get you that information. I just don't recall what it is.
I just can't zoom in far enough.
I think the outside blue line is .5, but I can't remember what the black one is. So you'll see that we actually, we do a grid of numbers. Sorry, keep pointing at something. There's the numbers in here and then the calculation program will actually connect the dots, so to speak.
Let me ask a logistics question. Oh, there we go. I was just about to ask if IT doesn't wait until-
Unfortunately, this closest I can zoom in.
So I can see some of these readings are .4 around the blue line there. So it's below .4, the blue line.
And these are roughly 1.5, so it's roughly one foot candle apart.
And this is calculated theoretical?
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yes.
And just to clarify, these are actually measured in the field, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So the calculations that we do, the calculated values, now those do not take into account any sort of physical obstructions, be it landscaping or anything to that. So we were getting zero at the property line, not taking into account any of the existing landscaping that's there.
All right, thank you. Did you get your answer?
That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Shelley. The cross-examination is complete, so Mr. Frazier, thank you very much for your time.
Okay.
Mr. Flick, feel free to present your next expert.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'm going to call Chris Davies who is the president of the club. It's acceptable to counsel, I'll do the same way and ask him questions and then let you have an opportunity to cross. Could you give mayor, mayor pro temp and council your name, where you live, and what you do for a living?
Yes, good evening. My name is Chris Davies. I live at 1502 Yellow Rainbow Court and I'm a project manager, software development.
Will you let us know what your position is with the Isle of Chapel Swim and Tennis Club?
I'm the president of the board.
And please tell the council what neighborhoods that represents and how many homes are within the neighborhood of the club.
Yes, yep. Our club is shared between two neighborhoods, Pearson Farms and Dogwood Ridge, a couple of Dogwood Ridge 1 and 2, which includes the townhomes there that are near the court and a number of single-family homes, all told about 780 residences.
And I think that counsel has seen on the pictures and can from here, can you describe what Isle of Chapel Swim and Tennis Club consists of as a facility?
Sure. As you can see, we have some sports courts, now it's two pickleball courts, two tennis courts, and a basketball court, as well as the pool facility with a small clubhouse.
Did the club at some point determine to upgrade at least the court facilities of the Isle of Chapel Swim and Tennis Club?
Yes, it was about, I think it was, the court was about 20 years old and that was kind of the timeframe where replacement was due. So that just started right before my time on the board, but I was involved with most of it. But the initial decision was just before my time on the board, but.
You state that the courts were 20 years old. Does that mean that this facility, both the swim, tennis club, and these parking facilities have been in existence and used for 20-some years?
Yes, my understanding it was late 90s.
And when the club determined to renovate this court facility, what did they do?
Well, we hired Court One, Court One is a contractor. We hired an outside engineer and, you know, they came to us with recommendations. We discussed lighting as a way to kind of enhance the facility for families and provide increased opportunities for recreational play outside of, you know, the typical natural lighted hours to account for, you know, people coming home from work or after dinner with their families. So that was the primary driver behind adding these lights.
In making that decision, did the board weigh in on what they took the community, meaning the membership of the club, to be in favor of?
We, to my knowledge, we never heard anything in opposition during the planning phase.
Since this whole process has started, can you testify to the council what opposition you're aware of and what support you're aware of within the club?
The opposition I'm aware of is Mr. Thompson, as you've heard him speak before in these various hearings we've had. The support is broad and, you know, other than Mr. Thompson, I haven't heard personally anyone in opposition. So we've spoken to, you know, between all of us and the board, hundreds of different family members, and everyone has been very much excited to use them once we get them turned on and really it's just been support.
And in fact, the club as applicant conducted several neighborhood meetings in which anyone who was within the required distance from the courts was notified?
That is correct.
Did anybody appear at either of those neighborhood meetings with any opposition?
No.
And that's reflected in the application and the reports to the staff?
Yes, it is.
I want to make sure that you can describe for counsel some of the questions that they were asking earlier in that what the club has agreed to do in terms of an automatic cutoff, glare shields, and fabric privacy screening.
Sure. So as has been discussed, we agreed to the privacy screening to go all around all four sides of the court just to mitigate any concerns about the other three sides. We have agreed to the landscaping plan that was submitted with the planning department and the automatic cutoff was originally installed with the system, so that was not a retrofit that we had to make. And the glare shields were installed at the request of the town in July of 2017, so those have been in place for a year. I'd like to add that the system does have a lock. The tennis court is locked, just like our pool is locked with the magnetic key card that our residents have, and those locks are disabled. You know, for the pool, it's 8:30 or so, depending on the time of the year, and for the tennis courts, it's 10 o'clock.
And that's year-round?
That is year-round.
For the tennis courts?
Yes.
Did the club rely on Court One to permit and build and hit the lighting system? Was this a turnkey package between the club and Court One?
Our understanding going into it was that it was a turnkey package as none of us are experts in this area and none of the members of the board had gone through this type of a process before. We had trusted that Court One and the outside engineer that we had hired had done the requisite to get the permits and get everything turned on.
And to be clear, these facilities are currently being used year-round?
The courts are, the pool obviously is not, yes.
So any change in lighting is not going to impact facilities for the Town of Apex like roads, portable water, wastewater parks, police, fire, because the club is already in use? Is that correct?
Yes, the club is in use and, I mean, no one plays tennis in the evenings now with the parking light, but of course, kids manage to play basketball, you know, even up to that 10 o'clock cutoff, even with just the security light.
Because the club has been in existence for some 20 years, the outside buffer, the buffer at the property line has also been in place for that period of time. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And there were recently some, I believe some of the-
Three of the arbor veitai were, I don't know if they were diseased or they were, you know, brought down in a storm. I can't remember, but they were, you know, they were full-sized mature trees. They were 20 feet or so. They have been replaced a couple of years ago, so those are growing, but obviously they do not match the height of the existing mature trees.
And they're the smaller ones that you see right toward the middle of the court project in the parking lot?
Yeah, I think they are just to the left of that large shade tree.
Just around the corner. Yes.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, you can see there's the island that juts out into the parking lot there and then just to the left, you can see that there's a small gap.
And the club provided the site plan lighting sheet and the landscaping sheet that staff presented earlier along with its application?
That's correct.
And the club is prepared to stand behind that and plant the additional green shrubbery in the area between parking lot and the tennis courts as depicted on that site plan, is that correct?
Yes, we are.
I think you heard staff testify about the zoning and compatibility. Obviously, we're not changing any use on this property based on the lights other than maybe a couple of hours of tennis at certain times of the year. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And that would not be every night, obviously some nights are raining too cold or no one is playing.
Yes, or too hot.
Yeah, like in New York right now. I believe that's all the questions I have for this witness. If the council or mayor, mayor pro temp have any, I'll tender them to you this time.
All right, thank you. Mr. Davies, at this time, counsel cross-examination. I'll give Councilman Gant for a shot.
I'm good now.
Are you? Okay, you heard the answer you want. How about Councilman Jensen, did you have one?
Certainly good.
All right, very good. Anything for Mr. Davies?
Sir?
No? All right, well, thank you very much. Let me ask staff, yeah?
I have my question.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davies.
Thank you.
Mr. Flick, your next testimony?
At this time, that's all the evidence we're going to present. We need rebuttal evidence or if you have questions that you might like to ask our additional witnesses that are here to prepare to testify.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask if staff has any non-repetitive rebuttal evidence to present?
Yes.
All right, does the applicant? Any non-repetitive rebuttal? All right. And at this time, as promised, Mr. Thompson, I'd like to invite you up if you still are interested. This is your opportunity to provide, and I want to be clear and give you some guidance here, subjective observations. Please don't make any claims that would have to be substantiated by a witness. I don't want to cut you off unnaturally, but if you want to observe or make statements based on your own observations as a resident within visibility of the courts, please do so now.
Okay, I'll try to keep it very short. There's many things I want to point out, but I'll just focus this onto you then. One, I'm understanding these poles from the testimony was 20 feet high, is that correct? But the screen around isn't going to be eight foot high?
Well, I'm going to pause you now.
Okay.
Because I want you, you're invited up to make your personal observations as a resident, okay? So not to cross-examine after the presentation of all the evidence. Do you understand the difference? If you're asking questions about the height or the fence type or plantings, that's not why we have this time slot for you. This time slot for you is so that you can present to us your observations as an individual from where you live.
Yes, well, my observation will still, those light heads being 20 feet still will be able to shine light with no foliage into my bedroom windows.
You're saying what they will or won't do. Can you say what is? So if you're at your house, can you say what you see? Then that would be acceptable, subjective testimony.
When those lights were on in 2017, without any illumination on my house, I could get out of bed and I could walk around just as if I had a nightlight in there.
Okay, that's acceptable. That's good testimony. Do you have anything else you want to provide from an observation standpoint?
And with that amount of light, it's a lot more harder to sleep than if it was darkness in there. That's my, you know, obviously why I'm here tonight.
And if you don't mind, if I lead you just a little bit, how is that different from the lighting that comes from the parking lot that you had before these lights were installed?
Well, actually, the parking lot lights, again, Mr. Mayor, you might call me on this, that I'm not an expert, but I did have a lighting meter and the town's ordinance is one foot candle and even the parking light shines up more than one foot candle.
I'm going to interrupt you here because you're not a lighting engineer, so you're not authorized to take, to present evidence to us, but from your observation, how, I won't ask, but one more time. I'll ask it one more time, if you, if you're, if you're in your residence, how has the new lighting changed the impact to you from what was there before the lighting, because there are lights in the parking lot?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I haven't turned the lights on, and all this still is planned, they have not installed the vegetation, haven't done all this, they haven't turned on the lights since, well, a long time ago, I mean, we've gone through this a long time, they've done their diligence and not have turned the lights on.
I'm going to stop you again, I'm sorry, but you're telling me what they will or won't do, that's not your subjective testimony, so at this time, I'm going to give you one last opportunity to give us your position, things that you observed as a resident, not what somebody else is doing, what do you see, okay, what do you see as a resident, that's, that's why you're able to, to present us some individual subjective observations.
When their lights are on, you can see them quite clearly.
You, okay.
And during, during the winter months, I mean, you can actually see the players up there, now, by adding the eight-foot fence, I won't be able to see the players, but those lights are still going to be 12 feet above where that screen is, the light is still going to come.
So you're saying that you will be able to see the tops of the poles from your house, where the lights are installed, you can see them now, right, that's what you're saying?
Vegetation right now is good enough that I can't actually see the poles or anything, if the lights were on, you could see whatever comes through the vegetation.
All right.
During the winter months, it's full open.
All right, all right.
And my, and, and engineers, you know, didn't actually come to my property and take the measurements, they took them from the, as he said, from the parking lot.
All right, any other observations, Mr. Thompson, from your perspective as a resident there? I want to give you your opportunity, but I, but I have to keep you within the rails, you know what I mean?
Within, within the rails is all I'm going to make at this time.
All right, thank you.
Any questions from the council?
Well, we don't normally cross-examine at this point, but I did do a little bit of interaction, so I'll see if council has a specific question for you related to your observations from where you live, anything?
So, I'm a little afraid to ask this question, but from what you heard tonight, does it sound like that those things, the things they offer to do, that possibly that will help with what you view as a nuisance into your bedroom window, related to the time, related to the vegetation, the anti-glare, do you think that those things would then mitigate some of the issues that you bring up, because it's hard to do that now, but they're offering things.
And before you, before you answer, maybe let me couch that for you, if you want to tell us how you feel about it, but not present evidence of what will or won't happen, I'm happy to allow you to answer that question, but otherwise, you understand the difference?
Yes, well, how I feel about it is I'm an accountant, so I can do some math, and when you say you're going to have shrubbery out there that's going to be put in at six-foot tall, or eight-foot tall, and a screen is eight-foot tall.
I'm going to stop you, I'm going to stop you there.
And the pole is up 20-foot.
Mr. Thompson, I'm going to stop you there, okay?
I tried.
You're not, I know, I know, all right.
So, so what I will say then, I'll make a statement, is that, that I'm pretty sure that everyone up here will be, will work with the applicant to ensure that we're most respectful of you and the other people similarly situated who aren't here tonight, and that's what I think that we have to do, you know, we have, we've checked, and we have to check the boxes, and it says, you know, are these things becoming nuisances, and so that's what we have to check the box, if we check the box and say it won't, then we have to guarantee that, so that's what I would offer to you, is that I'm sure they will be good neighbors to you in that process, that's, that's, that's what I got to say.
All right, thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Pass the ball up real quick.
Do you have?
Yes, so, related to his observation?
Yeah.
When you say that you can see the bottom, the tops of the fixtures, are you referring to the ones that are nearest and the lights getting through, you perceive the guard, or is it the other side of the court that are shining kind of towards you, but they're farther away?
Councilman, actually, it's kind of a whole package, because if you look on the map, how broad the court is from, from left to right, also you'll notice my building is kind of basically left to right, so the visual is pickleball courts over here, basketball courts over there, it's, it's a panoramic view, it's just not a corner or anything like that.
Okay, and you're seeing particular light fixtures shining through from each of those kind of areas?
Yes, and I'm being honest, I mean, with the vegetation, depends on what time of year we're talking about, in the, in the winter months, there's gaps up there in the arborvitae right now, that, you know, that's a huge gap, some of the arborvitae, the way they grow, have points.
No, I'm sorry, what is your observation from your residence, you're not a tree expert, so I can't let you do that, what is your, what, so the question put to you, I think, was something to do with, are you seeing a specific light from one side of the court or the other, and if the answer is no, you're seeing it from all of it?
Yeah, no, Mr. Mayor, the answer is kind of all, from all over, it depends on where it is, and depends on what heights.
That's right, that's, that's what I heard you say, it's from all over, but you're seeing, you're seeing, but you, but you also said that there are trees in the way currently, and so you don't see the poles directly, you see light coming through, right, is that what you said?
Mr. Mayor, there are 15 poles up there, plus there are extra forest, forested poles.
Mr. Thompson, I asked you a very specific question, don't tell me how many poles there are, please, I asked you a very specific question, when, I was clarifying what you said, and I'm pretty sure I got it right, that you aren't seeing the poles necessarily, you're seeing light coming through the trees.
No, Mr. Mayor, I can see some of the poles, not all the poles.
Okay, well, then that's different from what you said.
It depends on what time of year, whether I can see most of the poles, or, or three poles, or all 15 poles.
All right, at this time, I think we've gotten all that we need, thank you, Mr. Thompson, you're excused, at this time, I will move on. Are there closing arguments from staff?
Okay.
How about from the applicant?
Just very brief, yeah.
Come on, sure?
I don't mind.
Nope?
As I said at the beginning, your attention to this matter is greatly appreciated, this has been a very long process, not just for the board members and those of us working with the town and town staff, but also for the 700 some families who assumed when they paid for this lighting system, they were going to be able to use it, contrary to some of what you just heard, these lights have not been on for well over a year, so no one can stand before you and testify as to what the impact is of the lighting system today, and certainly not of the lighting system that's been planned, I would say that the, the club cognizant of there are one neighbor who is not supportive of this plan, has gone to great lengths to address those issues and to act responsibly in a way that lessens the impact as much as you can possibly lessen the impact, you heard an expert testify that this lighting is the most neighborhood-friendly lighting in the world for this kind of project, I don't know what more could be asked of these people who have gone through this long process to be able to use the lights that they paid for, installed, inspected, permitted, the whole nine yards, I would respectfully say that we have checked all the boxes for what's required under the special use permit and some, that we have gone above and beyond in trying to do that, and able to be able to use the lighting system, and so we're appreciative, when I look at the special use permit checklist, I'm happy to go over it, I think you all are certainly confident to do that on your own, of which of these witnesses often do testify to that special use permit issue, compatibility, both the staff and Mr. Davies talked about how this is not a new use for this property, this is a 20-some-year-old recreational facility that is lit all the time in its parking facility, and is lit occasionally for tennis, I mean, for swimming meets, and is now going to be lit a few hours a day, some days of the week in order to play tennis, and well-respected. Staff and Mr. Davies testified, the zoning district supplemental standards are met, the zoning's not changing, nothing in the use of this property is changing, Mr. Frazier and the staff testified that this design avoids significant adverse impacts being a nuisance and minimizes any adverse impact, again, the most neighborhood-friendly lighting structure you can buy, both Frazier, Mr. Frazier and the staff testified that this design minimizes environmental impact, that these new LED blade systems are so close to cut off that you barely have the parking light level of light outside of the fence and the courts on this system, both Mr. Davies and the staff indicated that this is a currently-used facility, so that the impact on any public facilities for the town of Apex is minimum, in fact, if there's anything to deal with that particular item, you heard Mr. Frazier indicate that the current level under the UDO is unsafe, that you can't play recreational tennis at 10-foot candles, and if any impact would be on your public facilities, it would be to try to use it under those standards, and then the staff report indicates that the site plan and landscape sheet were supplied, and that all those supplemental standards of the ordinance have been met, so I would say that we've checked off all of those boxes, we hope this long process is over, we will try to be respectful neighbors and do whatever we can to lessen the impact on anyone who is next to the tennis courts.
Thank you, Mr. Flick. All right, at this time, I'll ask council to refer to their own checklist in front of them, and if you have any question about any of the testimony that was presented tonight by the applicant or by staff, related to any specific item, or if a new question has popped in your mind that's related to the testimony that you feel like you need clarification, now is your opportunity to ask that question.
I, I had one quick question, staff, I believe, if I may?
Sure.
And that is, the final height of these holly bushes that are getting planted, they start out at 6 feet, I think you said, what, what height do those holly bushes eventually grow to?
They're actually being installed at approximately 7 to 8 feet tall.
7 to 8 feet, okay.
The condition language was prior to when we actually discussed the particular shrubs being put in, but they will get in excess of 20 feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for either staff or the applicant? All right, not hearing any, I'll close the public hearing, now I'll refer the matter back to council, this is our opportunity to deliberate over the findings of the facts and the present, presented evidence tonight, and, and see if there are any conversation or motions.
Well, I would say that I think this is, this is a model example of how we want the lighting to be, is neighborhood, fitting into a neighborhood, and I think the additional screening that was discussed in the, in the UDO amendments last time, and, and the additional plantings and the cutoff, I think are not in the, in the UDO, and those are above and beyond, so I, I think that's, that's wonderful, I think that hopefully everybody can at least, they can enjoy the tennis courts without having too many adverse impacts on everybody else.
I would like to echo that, I think it's, the upgrading in the lighting at this facility is going to, is going to be more concentrated on the actual courts itself, so I think it's much better than the old-style floodlights where you just kind of light up the whole area, you know, so, you know, great, great job on that, I would say that to staff, it seems like we might need to take a look at our UDO for proper foot candle illumination, seems to be far below where maybe it needs to be for recreational sports, but...
Well, I, I look at it just really briefly, the, you got triple line of defense against the light coming off of this thing, you got the windscreen, you've got the hollies, and then you got those other plants, whichever they are, you got three, three layers of, of protection from preventing that light from coming, and if those hollies eventually grow to, to 20 feet, then it becomes quite difficult to see even the tops of the poles, and the tops of the poles really aren't that much of an adverse impact in the first place with these LED lighting, I think they've gone quite overboard to try to be good neighbors. I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second discussion on the motion to approve. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, all right, that passes unanimously. And I would like to, before we leave this item, I would like to echo the sentiments that I heard up here, I do think that the club, association, or the board, and its members have gone above and beyond to make sure they mitigate the impacts, and that, well, I was about to say, I hope everyone gets to enjoy the facilities there, and this is a, I liked what you said, Councilman Gant, a model, I mean, I think, we're not going to, this is not going to be the first utility or recreational facility that's going to want to extend their hours, upgrade their courts, I mean, we're going to see this 10, 20, 30 years, 40 years from now, with courts continuing to be kept up and be, you know, maximize utilization, I mean, if you've got an asset, you want to figure out how to use it as much as you can, so kudos, enjoy.
Thank you.
I guess thank you for, for following the process as well, everybody, sticking with us, with that, I will ask a very specific question to the council, normally if we've made it this far, I'll ask for a recess, however, we have only one item before we would adjourn to closed session, so let me just ask, is there any interest by council to take a break or power through this one item, and then we'll break before we go to a closed session?
Can we take a couple of minute breaks?
All right, so we'll, we'll take a very, very brief, three-minute recess.